Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Brown, Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Present.
Mr. McDowell?
Present.
Mayor Rickaman?
Here.
I believe Councilwoman Herbert is going to join us via Zoom.
Is she on now?
I didn't hear.
Okay. Reverend McDowell, do you mind saying the invocation, please?
That is my hedge. This Advent season proves to us that the Christ child is well and surrounding us with love and with care. We pray for the Advent child as he embraces and embarks upon new possibilities. For every person in the city of ours, as we think about things to celebrate Christmas with our children, we also celebrate the life-flowing blood of Him who loves us and cares for us. Take this Christmas season and let it be a joy to each one of us. And as we celebrate, let us not forget those who are less fortunate and that they may feel in true sense of the giving season. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. With that, we'll stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor? You ready to proceed, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, we will ask for the adoption of the agenda. Two amendments, Mr. Mayor. One, adding the discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contractual arrangements pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 3470A2, homeless services will add this to Item 20, as well as the employment of an employee, the city manager, and city attorney evaluations.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Public input. Individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address City Council about items on the agenda. The items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time.
Mayor, no one has signed up.
Approval of minutes, item number one. Council is asked to approve the December 3rd, 2024 work session minutes and regular meeting minutes.
So move.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussions, changes, comments? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Consent Agenda Items 2 through 6 as listed, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Is there a motion? For Items 2 through 6?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Quan, I'm just curious on the lower Crane Creek, I feel like we've been equalizing the storage there for a long, long time. Equalization storage, a Fourth Amendment, why is that?
So that's the large EQ tank that's being built on the Old Clare wastewater plant site in support of the flow from the northeast and the development that's happening there with Scout Motors. So this is to compensate the consultant for the value engineering discussion that we had in reducing the overall contract price in those negotiations. There was also some flooding, Clomar issues that delayed the project schedule and also the construction schedule. So there's a little bit of design work, but also some construction administration work that's occurring in there. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is. And building that really large storage tank that's helping us. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman? Thank you.
We are now moving- It says yes to. Thank you.
Aye, Councilwoman. Moving into a public hearing and first reading for zoning and planning matters, Ms. Hampton will be here, is here, to assist. Item 7 is an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 549 Old Woodlands Road.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Yes, this is a request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of urban edge residential large lot and a zoning of residential single-family large lot. Consummate donut hole.
That is the smallest donut hole in Columbia, huh?
There's a few of others here and there. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item?
I love that.
A move for approval. Second.
Yes. Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman? Thank you.
All right. The second and final case, number eight, is an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 3.56 and .516 acres on the south side of Broad River Road. It's a request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of urban, of commercial, community activity corridor and a zoning of light industrial.
Is there anybody here who speaks for or against this item?
No, sir.
Ms. Herbert?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussions? Hearing none, seeing none, madam clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman? Thank you.
To conclude the zoning public hearing, I wanted to bring sad news. Hope Hasty, although she's not here tonight because she doesn't have any items on the agenda, she is leaving us to lead the long-range planning program for Spartanburg County. She has guided us through a lot of transitions, a new UDO, and has done so terrifically and wanted to let her know of the appreciation.
When is her last day?
Her last day is Friday.
The state is just not nearly as attractive and fun as the Midlands.
I agree. We're gonna let her know all the time.
But we look forward to hearing from her.
Best wishes for Hope. Resolutions, item number nine. Resolution number R 2024 091, approving and ratifying mutual aid agreements between the City of Columbia and the City of Columbia Police Department and various law enforcement agencies and authorizing the city manager of the City of Columbia and the chief of police of the City of Columbia to execute all such agreements.
Motion to approve?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman? Thank you.
Item 10, Resolution Number R 2024 092, authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement between the City of Columbia and South Carolina State Federal Credit Union for a portion of the property identified as Richland County TMS Number R 089110111 and 12 in support of the Williams Street Extension Project.
Mayor, motion to approve?
Got a motion and a s- is there a second? Got a second? Any further discussions? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Item 11, Resolution Number R 2024 093, a resolution to express the City of Columbia's support for the University of South Carolina Gamecock Football Team's inclusion in the college football playoff.
Got a motion, is there a second? I'll second it. Not gonna wait around. And, and this is purely to support not only our football team, our players and our coaches, but they're incredible ambassadors for this community and what they do. And, and I could not stand by and not at least voice my disapproval of not, them not being included in the talks for the playoff and being part of that, that with their, what they've done this season and what they brought to our community. But the commitment by Coach Beamer to this community, constantly being there at every level, showing up in our community, supporting community activities. And even if you look at his latest support with the Shepherd Hotel in the heart of our city, I think it's the least we could do is show our support for them. And I do want to give out a shout to one of our seniors there, Alex Boogie Huntley. Great Colombian who does nothing but talk positive about this city and really is gonna contribute a lot. And with that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Could I add a go Irish to this at all? Little amendment to the motion?
No. I, I, how do you support a team that's not even in a league?
We're in a league of our own.
We'll find out, won't we?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 11, Resolution Number R 2024 09- oh, that's the same one, number 12, Resolution Number R 2024 094. Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk and Ms. Wilson, can we read Items 12 and 13 in together? And then I will ask for somebody from one Columbia to give some commentary about projects.
Absolutely. Item 12, Resolution Number R 2024 094, approving the installation of a public art project in the Leakin Street Tunnel. And Item 13, Resolution Number R 2024 095, approving the installation of a public art project on the Park Street Trash Enclosure, both endorsed by the Arts Historic Preservation and Philanthropy Committee on November 19th, 2024.
So we have a motion? So we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? And discussion? Ladies, the podium is yours.
Hi, thank you for having us here today. I'm Abby Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of the Congare Vista Guild. And so we've been working through the new public art process, placement process with the city. And so we are looking for your approval to put two pieces in 2025, two, um, large public art pieces, um, in the city right of way. The first one is a lighted piece that will go, um, that will be a major public art installation inside the Lincoln Street Tunnel. We'd like to do it next fall in conjunction with the opening of Finley Park, so that would help drive people from the Vista to the park and vice versa. Um, and then we also would like to do a, um, wall sculpture on the new Park Street Trash Enclosure that was just implemented a couple of years ago.
So moved.
Great.
So we've got a motion and a second? Any questions?
Yeah, I'd, I would like to hear from Pamela from One Columbia just about these projects. Some, if you could, tell the public, please?
Yeah, sure. Um, we are actually partnering with the Vista, um, in order to help them along with the process of selecting artists. I appreciate the support of the, um, Arts and Historic Preservation and Philanthropy Committee, um, helping us move this along. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Could you maybe tell us a little bit about the installation, one of y'all? Just, just, just so the public knows what to look forward, so they can get excited?
Um, this will be a lighting, one of them will be a lighting project in the Lincoln Street Tunnel. And so we have artists that are gonna be proposing, um, concepts for that, but it will be colored lighting, it'll be, um, it'll change colors. We're hoping that people will use it as, um, a place to visit when they come to Columbia and also maybe a place to do selfies and share on social media. And then the Park Street wall sculpture, that's going to be, um, probably metal, I would guess, but it's gonna be, um, some type of decorative art that sits up off of the wall. Um, we thought that that was a good alternative-
On the sidewalk side or the street side?
Both.
Both.
Both, yeah. Thought that might be a good alternative to painting it.
And, Mr. Mayor, these are the first two projects to make it to a vote for council as a resolution to come out this committee. And so I would like to thank, uh, the stakeholders, such as the Vista Guild and One Columbia, Xavier Blake, Pamela, for y'all trusting the process and working with the city. I know it's new, I think it's working well, and I'm excited to see more, uh, public art come through the committee and make its way to the public in Columbia. So thank you, uh, for your work and follow-up and working with us as we see these projects come to fruition. And I want to make sure that this does get done in conjunction with the opening of Finley Park. That's gonna be a big moment for Columbia.
It will be. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Event resolutions, item number 14, resolution number R 2024-085, authorizing consumption of beer and wine beverages only at the 2025 Mardi Gras Festival at City Roots Farm in the 1,000 block of Airport Boulevard-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Uh, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Item 15, resolution number R 2024-088, authorizing consumption of beer, wine, and liquor for a New Year's Eve event by LTC Hospitality at the 1,600 block of Main Street between Taylor Street and Blanding Street on Tuesday, December 31st, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Other matters, item 16, the American Rescue Plan State and Local Fiscal Recovery Plan update. Ms. Missy Kaufman Budget Program Management and Grants Directive is available, as am I, Mr. Palin, any questions you may have? Obviously, we are rolling up on the December 31st date. We're all, uh, units of government and others who've received ARPA funding, uh, must obligate those funds. And we've pretty much already done that. There are a few remaining, um, items that needed to be obligated, but you all have that before you.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussions, questions for staff as stated? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Brown? Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration of bids, contracts, and change orders, item 17, council is asked to approve Contract Amendment Number 2 for the Food and Security Solutions Initiative as requested by the Office of Business Opportunities on November the 25th, 2024, the award to Tom's Creek Family Farms LLC in an amount not to exceed $143,400. The current term of the contract ends on January 24th, 2025, and this amendment extends the contract to January 24th, 2026. The contractor is located in Hopkins, South Carolina, and this is one of the items where ARPA funds have been utilized, um, as listed.
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
For discussion purposes, um, I don't know, Ayesha, whoever, could y'all maybe give a summary about, you know, how many hits, how things are working? Uh, just, I think it'd be good for the public to know. I mean, this is one of the initiatives that came out of our food insecurity, uh, and we're able to utilize this ARPA money for.
Yeah, so initially, when it was awarded, we had three days identified. We were able to add a fourth through our partnership with the Comet Central, thanks to coordination from Councilwoman Brennan and Councilwoman Herbert. Um, and that's gone very well, very successful. So we want to continue to offer four days going into the next 12 months. Um, it's been very successful. Of course, it's a pilot program, so we continue to look for ways if we need to change the location. So there might be some location changes in the upcoming year. Um, but we've been very satisfied with the participation from the community. A lot of repeat customers, a lot of interest in what we're doing from around the state. Um, so it's overall been a very positive experience, and I can let Larry elaborate.
Good afternoon. Of course, you guys have all been on the trailer. We've talked. It's working. It is. We definitely see an increase every week. Everything from changing the locations, at the same location, just road frontage. So that's what we're gonna work towards next year, is we're gonna get the trailer exposed. We did a Hyatt Park project with the city. They actually made us a little parking spot. People can pull right up, see the trailer from North Main now. It's all working out.
I got a question, Mr. Mayor. So as y'all look for potential new places for the, for the trailer, you focus right now just on publicly owned parcels by the City of Columbia, right? Parks and Rec, the Comet, uh, actually, the parking lot's owned by the city there. If, if there's any that stand out to you that could be very advantageous but are owned by private, um, groups, I think that's something for us to at least have a dialogue about. Um, certainly, if, if it's on a premier intersection, great visibility, but of course, it's not publicly owned.
Yeah, so, um, the location at, on Thursday on Hardin Street, we were able to coordinate with the owners of the old Save-A-Lot location. So we do have an opportunity to speak to privately owned places that'll let us use the space for free or a minimal charge. Um, so yes, we, we're certainly interested in doing that as well.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Keep it up. So how many people do you think we're serving?
Um, we serve anywhere from 25 to 120 a day. It just depends on the week and the month and there's a lot of variables in it.
Is the location, uh, pretty germane to that attendance?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's all in location and visibility of the trailer. That is one thing we learned this year. When we initiated this, we did road trips and we went out and tried to shoot from the hip of where it's gonna work. And us being hid, one of the locations that we want to change is on Wednesday because we're kind of hidden in a neighborhood and we don't get a lot of exposure. So after the, this new contract, we're definitely working on Wednesdays.
And I would also add, um, when the senior vouchers come out, you see an increase in participation as well, and that's typically July through, through August, October is the timeframe. So we did see an increase during those months as well.
I should probably know this, but can you make sure that I get some type of email communication? Tell me where you guys are?
Oh, you'll have it today.
Yeah, great. I wanna, I wanna come visit. Any other further questions, comments?
Thank you.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert? And Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 18, council is asked to approve a new contract for asbestos abatement and demolition services as requested by the Columbia Police Department on November 24th, 2024, a warrant to Quarterly Construction Company LLC in an amount not to exceed $856,862, which includes contingency. The initial term of the contract will take effect upon issuance of the notice to proceed with an end date 120 days from commencement. This contractor is located in Columbia, South Carolina. Again, another, um, good example of the ARPA dollars at work.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any further discussions, questions? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving into a period of city council committee referrals, reports, and new business, the first, uh, referral that we do already have listed is item 19. Council is asked to approve the formation of a city council homeless services ad hoc committee as requested by the Honorable Will Brennan.
Motion to approve.
Is a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to give some light on the purpose of bringing this forward. You know, we just talked about, uh, ARPA funding and, and what that has meant to standing up our homeless services, our newly formed homeless services department, I should add, under great leadership of, of Ms. Camisha Leopard. So, um, if you live, work, play downtown, you know that homelessness, uh, is the, is not going in the right direction as far as the amount of homeless, unsheltered folks in our great city. Um, our service providers are, are, are doing their job, they're working hard. But just understanding what is ahead for us when it comes to what else might be needed. We, as a council, have significantly invested under your leadership, Ms. Wilson, in standing up the, um, the, um, the rapid shelter and the homes, the temporary homes as our, as our citizens move on to permanent housing. So as we move forward and more is asked of us financially, I think it's important that we understand the big picture. What is that number of the actual, uh, census of homeless, unsheltered folks? And I understand January, um, is the month where nationally, uh, local HUD, ours is, our continuum of care group is the MOCC, is supposed to do the census count. And I think it's very good timing that we bring this forward to make that our priority number one for January and February, understanding the bit, the number of homeless folks in our communities, not just our city, but hopefully in our county, and how we then have that dialogue on how we respond. So, Mr. Mayor, that's why I bring that forward. And, um, I think where it will be housed, I'm not sure at this time, but, um, we, we have a lot, a lot of work to do on understanding the big picture of what is ahead of us.
And that would include the ability to move forward on looking into projects such as the Hope Center, community involvement, so that we can really address this issue that we've been trying to, to move forward on.
Well, understanding it, what are the programs, the effectiveness, what gaps are there? Just everything from the holistic approach, I think.
And then, um, hopefully, most of us can participate in the count as well. I think it'd be very good for us to, to have that time out there too because it is a citywide issue, uh, that affects every corner of the city. It's not just a downtown issue. It doesn't matter what corridor we're in, uh, unfortunately. We, we have too many unsheltered folks that we need to make sure that are finding the services that are available and, and having the opportunity to support them, so. Uh, any other comments?
Yes, Mayor. Well, we're looking at this being a priority for the city. Is that right?
It already is with the investment we've made, but yes, sir.
All right. Just as long as we're looking at 2025. Start up in January, you think?
Absolutely. Get that, get the, get the census number?
Okay.
Use that as the basis?
You got, yeah. You gonna use that as a basis, right?
Know where we're going.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Thank you.
And, and, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I would add, um, in relation to that point in time count, I know that we've had some discussions about, um, making sure that that count is very representative and thorough. And so that may mean through you all's leadership with this newly formed ad hoc committee and our work with Camisha, that we get a little direction from, from her on some of these, um, areas that need to particularly be addressed, because I think some-
I'm hoping that's heavy on the first agenda for the meeting in January for that direction.
Yes, sir.
That's corrected and correct data.
Yes, sir.
In relation to census, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk?
Okay. Mayor, um, I believe we've already read the roll on that one, didn't we?
Um, I think we're at public input.
Can I, um, refer to items to the Community Development Committee on behalf of-
On behalf of Ms. Herbert?
Ms. Herbert, yeah. Ms. Herbert, if you're listening, so I'll go ahead and refer the feasibility of a housing equity study, pros, cons, industry standards, and uses, as well as design guidelines that help revitalize communities or prevent from deterioration. So those two items to the Community Development Committee.
So, second.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, as we move forward, did you already have recommendations for the members of the ad hoc committee? Do we want to get into that now?
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Bustles, Mr. Bailey, but encourage all, um, council members to participate.
Okay, very good. Thank you both.
Typically, we, uh, we brought a lot of the homeless-related things to the Health, Social, Environmental Affairs, Environmental Affairs. And so we're kind of seeing this as an ad hoc of that committee.
Okay.
Can you repeat that roster for this committee one more time?
That's Mr. Mayor Pro Tim.
For the homeless services?
Yes.
We talked about yourself, Dr. Bustles, and I as the chair.
Okay, got it. No objection from me.
You didn't have a choice, not continuing.
You were volatile. All right, thank you, sirs.
All right, Mayor, we have one individual who has signed up to speak. As Mr. Wade Fulmer comes forward, we will remind him of our three-minute time limit.
Hello, once again. End of the year. Happy holidays. That health and order thing, but city myth in my case. I've been there, state agencies, witnessed the charade in my healthcare and order career. The mentally ill, disabled, elderly, and veterans housed without oversight, but chain of agency paper positions without intent or supervision to do quality of life, quality of care. Silence of politics, don't want to know, don't want to do the duty, but convenient dereliction rather than legal duty for health and order. Nonenforcement of health and order nuisance annual noise. A few points emphasis of December 3rd. My three minutes ran out. For one year and three months, my emails at meetings, questions, concerns. More than three years, same dog nuisance noise. Before council, emails, no replies, questions, requests ignored. The city advertising service, the city advertises service but denies and obstructs. Again, I contacted you before that one case, which was the city case. Five attorneys involved with a nuisance dog while discovery and evidence were withheld in a court of fiasco. It's all there. It's recorded. Christmas, Mr. Mayor, has been, it is your watch. The city needs discernment and leadership, honesty and transparency. That is not to put it all on you, but that's what we need. Not avoidance advice or cover up by our far privilege or connection. Privilege being those people who aren't affected by the situation that I am and that other people in my community are. I wish you the gift of empathy, other than family and other special interests which we all have. The gift of empathy to do legality duty. This thing's a can of worms. Three years I've been listening to the dog. One year before you, 15 months. Your silence feeding the can of worms. Where are the chain supervisors to do the duty of the animal control division? Your silence, convenient advice is complicit dereliction. Counsel and city staff have my today extensive recap, two years of log in additional to other points. 15 months to counsel, emails for three emails, 15 months of emails, three years recurrent nuisance barking. Just, just stop it. A new year, not if, but when, as I have said so many times, not if, but when, when there will be more nuisance barking. And that nuisance barking is against health and order. Since my last appearance, December 3rd, three, three times doesn't seem like much, but there's been three incidents since December 3rd. This follows the same pattern of more than three years. And I know I have to stop. Same, the same pattern of more than three years. It has a little break, starts back up. It's all patterns. I, as a retired person, as a war veteran, as a citizen, as a retiree, I should not be having to wonder each night, is this going to be another night when I'm awakened by dog barking? Please do something. More can be done. I'm sorry?
You have your extra time. We appreciate you being here. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, may I ask you a question, Mr. Fulmer? Has that been, you contacted a lot of us?
Can you get a little bit? I can't quite hear you.
All right. You contacted a lot of us relative to your situation and the noise nuisance that is around your neighborhood. Has that been any conversation with persons, your next door neighbors or neighbors within that community? You contacted everybody except, have you contacted neighbors?
Have I contacted neighbors?
Yes.
This is the interesting thing.
No, I just, just a yes or no. That's, I just, I just want to know, is it yes or no, whether you, you've asked us to do this?
Neighbors have contacted-
You've asked us to do, wait just a minute. You've asked us to do this several times.
Yes.
And every, every, every council meeting?
Yes.
You've asked about that ordinance. What I'm asking you, you've asked everybody else. Have you asked to talk to your neighbors about the noise?
I have, I have talked to my neighbors.
I say, I can-
I have talked with my neighbors.
And their, their position is what?
The, the logistic is that all around me, there are eight dogs. None of them are left out at night to dark. The thing about my situation is it's the house right next door on a corner.
Have you had a conversation with them?
Oh, yes. I, uh-
And what has been, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. What has, what, what has been that conversational piece?
With, with the neighbor?
Yeah, right next door to you.
Uh, in September, this is why it's been three years, in September of 21, the barking had started. It had gotten worse and worse. I wrote a nice letter, very diplomatic. My last line in the letter was, please do something. Months later, I would get a letter from the neighbor because I had had to contact Animal Control and even CPD. And the, the neighbor in the long letter referred to, and I know the mayor wasn't here that first meeting. I was here on October 3rd. But I referenced the fact that this letter says, was written to me in anger because I had contacted the authorities. It said, well, we enjoy chatting with the animal control person. And he says, it's really difficult when they get complaints and the dog is not barking when they come to the house. We're talking about 99% night barking that awakens me. The dog doesn't bark during the day, or when he does, it's not a problem. We're talking about in the middle of the night. And, and, and the, it escalated to the point where I both had to contact the police and sit down with them. I did try to contact Ms. Riles. I never got a call back. But it's just gone on. And there's, there's, I have-
It seems to me, and I don't want to take up his time, Mr. Mayor, but it seems to me that there ought to be some responsibility from those, from those, from those next door neighbors as relates to the dogs and the noise over there. Continuing to bring that to us, and I think our city has been very responsive.
They went to court.
They went to court?
Yeah.
And?
It's not a case.
Not a case. My point is, you've had a conversation with your neighbors.
Yes.
We've had a conversation, you've had a conversation with all of us and with city officials. And we continued, you continued to say that, that nothing is taking place. Something has taken place. There's no case found in the court system. Is that right?
But nobody's-
And why, why, I'm, I'm sorry, and I'm through after this, Ms. Wilson. Why, why continue to bring that to the forefront of this conversation in terms of council meeting? That noise is being, is being done right in front of, outside of your window. Talk to your neighbors. Something ought to be able, something should and could be done with the neighbors having responsibility. If it's their, if their dog is, 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 is loud, then let's do something about that.
I, I did that.
We can't just continue to, we just can't continue, and I hate to say this, we just can't continue to do this and to harbor on this subject matter when there is a neighbor issue and not a city issue. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer.
Well, I did talk to all of those people, Columbia Police Department and Animal Control talked to them extensively. There is an extensive history. And they did not listen to them. They're not going to listen to me. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. I will be back. That's, it's a public forum. You're always welcome. Will, you got a motion?
Sorry. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We enter a executive session for discussions of these potential contractual arrangements pursuant to SE Code 3478 to One Columbia, City Manager, City Attorney, evaluation, and receipt of legal advice, ratings to impending threat, potential claims pursuant to SE Code 3478 to City of Columbia versus Airbnb, as well as discussion of the potential potential contractual arrangements pursuant to SE Code 3478 to Homeless Services.
So a motion is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Thank you.